Robert Crowe. Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Jerry Cadman. David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 3, 2015. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held June 2, 2015, and July 7, 2015. Item C is approve the reappointment of Gary Lunau and Louis Williams to the Board of Adjustment for three-year terms. Item D, approve the reappointment of Kent Graham, Dana Moffett, and Don Snow to the Planning Commission for three-year terms. Item E is approve a contract with the Moore Public School District in the amount of $304,294.24 to provide seven uniformed school resource officers for FY 2015-2016. And item F is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $3,294,482.5. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the votes if there's no other comments? Questions?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Item carries. Item number three is consider a condemnation and demolition appeal for 3104 Twin Circle Street application by Virgil Heyman.
Mayor, Council. This property that is on the screen, 3104 Twin Circle Street, that was damaged by fire in 2012. And about a year ago or so, the building official at that time began working with the property owner for repairs. It was posted for condemnation. However, the condemnation process was never actually completed. And there was some success for that. They had some limited repairs that were made. However, since that time, we've been receiving many complaints from the surrounding residents about the condition of the property. It was posted for condemnation again on May 22, 2015. We did hold an administrative hearing on June 8. The owner was not present at that meeting. And we, there was no contact made during that time to discuss the condition of the property or any repairs that might need to be made. Because of the issue of no contact being made, the order was prepared for, to have the home demolished. This appeal is the final administrative appeal that the applicant can make. And he is appealing the decision to have his home demolished. Because of the lapse of time between the fire in 2012 to now, with very little work done on the home, staff does feel like it is time to start to consider the impact that a structure like this can have in a neighborhood. There is a home for sale just west of this property. I know that that person, along with some of the other residents, are very concerned about how this property looks, how it's affecting their property values. We do believe that this home has become a blight on the neighborhood. And staff does recommend that this house be demolished. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that the only picture you guys have?
That is the only picture that we have, yes. And you can see from the picture that the roof is in need of some major repairs.
Is it the front door?
It is boarded up, I believe. Front door is boarded up.
Have any repairs?
There's some openings under the soffit. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Have any repairs been made since 2012?
I believe there have been some limited repairs done.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, your honors, and apologize to everyone concerned about the situation with my house. We have actually put about $16,000 into the building, getting it to where it is now. We had it dried in with the plastic sheeting, but as you can see, it didn't last very long. We have, last couple, of course, there's been a failure of communication on probably my part. My mother in Ohio recently died, and so I've been spending the last two and a half months dealing with her estate, and that's why I haven't been here. But I've come back, and I've got a bid for the roof to repair. And also, we're going to put the doors on and put siding on in the next couple of weeks, if I get the permission, if I get you guys' permission.
Where you been living?
I-
You don't live in there, right?
No, sir.
Is this a rent home, or is it your home that you live in?
It's going to be my home, yes.
Okay.
I know my neighbor's been very patient with me, and I have tried to put some work into it. And I thought I was in compliance with, I'm not sure of his name, a young man, Inspector Chat. He resigned recently, a couple of months, three months ago.
Shane.
Shane. And then, and I thought I was in compliance with him. He told me to put siding and close the sides, and I did. And then, this thing happened with my mother. And, but, at the same time, then I was given to Robert Corbett. And I guess he passed away recently, so there's been, it's been kind of juggled here. So, communication hasn't been clear to me. I didn't even know it's come down until today. So, I'm hoping that the city council gives me some leeway here, grace, and we have it completed, or at least the roof, the front door, and be nice here in the next couple of weeks.
When did you get your bid for that roof?
Seventeenth of July, seventeenth of July. A couple of weeks ago, I guess.
Are you having problems with the insurance company?
Oh, no, no, no. Just it's been a matter of me being here. And finances have been tight because of my mom's estate.
When did your mom pass away?
She passed away three years ago. We just got out of litigation with my family.
Start here about your mom.
What happened in 2012 that you moved forward? You said initially it was in 2012?
No, that was when the fire was that caused the damage. We generally give someone time to do the repairs. Not in the business of tearing people's houses down, obviously. So, we wanted to do as much time as we could. But as far as I know, a condemnation was started roughly eight months ago, six months ago. And that was under Shane Spiegel, the building official. And like I said, it was never completed. Which is kind of why I went over and started all over again, and we'll finish doing things.
So, with all these repairs that you talked about, they moved the windows, the doors, the siding. How soon do you think they can be?
I have it completed within the next 30 days, sir.
I have no objection to that.
About in 30 days.
Elizabeth, if that was completed, would that bring the home, as far as the exterior goes, up to code on the outside? Or are there some conditions on the inside?
We don't know on the inside. I don't know what it looks like on the inside. But as long as it looks-
Presentable.
-habitable and to a certain property maintenance standard on the outside, that's what the city's concerned about.
Councilman Roberts, I'd be, I'd be good with that.
Yeah. You know, that includes the fact that the yard must be made safe as well.
You're going to make that a motion?
I would, I would say.
Well, has the yard been an issue? Have we had to go out there and-
Well, it was, it was an issue just recently because I've waited for two months for my mom to say yes.
Did the city, my owner?
No, I got it.
Was there no lean or anything on it?
Not that I know of.
If you're gonna-
I don't know, but I just thought.
Okay. If you're going to do this, that's fine. I think we need-
On us.
If you're going to do it, that's fine. We don't want to tear anyone's house down. But this gentleman has had three years, and we've had a number of complaints in our office about this. So, what I would suggest is you-
Set a firm.
Set a, set a deadline, but also we'll have it on, set an agenda date in the future to have it back on the agenda to reconsider. And if, if not anything done at that time, then we'll have to take a different option. Shane worked with this gentleman for a long, long time, but we still have received numerous complaints over time.
That's what I was going to suggest also, is what Mr. Eadie has said to, if it's going to be tabled, you would table it for a month, a date of certain, in the future. And if it's 30 days out, then come back with photographs showing the roof has been repaired, that the doors have been installed, the windows have been replaced. And it begins to become a presentable house at that point. And if that's not done by the next time the hearing comes, you know, it will be time to be bid to turn down. As Mr. Eadie said, it's been three years. And, you know, it's been, it's been long enough as far as all of our notices have been done. All of our notices were done properly. And we do have photographs that it was posted, condemnation notice, and a big orange sign that's been placed on the property. As Mr. Eadie said, it's getting time.
Well, I would make-
September 21st?
Table this motion here until the September 21st meeting. At which time, we will look at what's been done and the job we probably want to do forward on condemnation.
Okay.
I would, I would just, before we go, would it be appropriate to, I mean, I would hate, of course, to come back and city staff go over there and say, "Well, this isn't done." And then you come here and say, "Oh, I didn't know that." And then we end up, you know, even investing another $10,000, $15,000. Should he have a list of things that need to be addressed?
Shane was doing that for me, yes. Well, I can do without our current building official. We put this down there and actually log the summary to determine what needs to be done and make a list. So, the homeowner, you'll be clear of everything that needs to be repaired by the meeting of the 21st? If those things aren't done, then we're going to move forward.
Right. You know, maybe hold a little tighter rein on the same. We'll just maybe delay it until the September 7 meeting, whether or not they at that time, if there's progress being made, we'll continue the action until the 21st. But if there's not anything happening by then, then the neighbor's probably going to fall. Would that, would, for you all, would that be an acceptable deal, City Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there going to be enough time to-
Well, that's, that's, that's three weeks from right now.
So, you wanted a progress report in three weeks, and then two weeks after that?
The work completed.
It will actually be on the 8th, because September 7th is Labor Day. So, Tuesday evening, the September 8th is your next city council.
Do I need to, do I need that motion again?
Before you do, we have a person signed up. Joy Hampton?
Did you want to?
Yes. I live at 3109 Twin Circle. My son lives next door, 3105. There has been not much of anything done there with the grasses, usually always close to knee-high. The backyard is knee-high. Never gets above. I don't know. If I don't see something done in 30 days, you'll hear from me, let me tell you. You'll hear from me, because I'm sick of it. I refinanced my house in 2012 in October, and it really did a number on that, let me tell you. Because it didn't have any roof. It was flat. Just a burned-out shell. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just not happy. I'm going to see a dawn.
But I think that is what we're proposing here, at 30 days.
I'll give them 30 days, and if they don't start doing something-
Go one way or the other.
Because they haven't been there in months. Period. Months.
Well, and actually, in three weeks, if there's not some, some movement there, it'll work.
Would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, now, I-
If you, if you could state your name and-
Jerry Stevens. I live at 3108 Twin Circle. And Virgil's a good man. I've worked with him with this, giving him electricity, letting him hook up and water and stuff like that. But it has been slow, and his, his whole purpose was to do this on a cash basis. Well, it's, it's been really, really slow, and I understand how, how things work. But if you hold his feet to the fire and make him, because inside, there's nothing in there. It's totally gutted out. There's just studs in there, and some of those look like they need to be replaced, too. He has cut the roof on, like what he said, but that was-
Two years ago?
It's been a while, and nothing's ever been done. And we've talked to him, and he always says, "Yeah, we're going to do this," but nothing ever really happens. So, if you hold his feet to the fire, that will be fine. I, I don't have a problem with that at all. But you're going to have to see progress, and he's not going to be able to do it cash-wise, because there's probably at least $60,000 worth of work that needs to be done in there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. What was your motion?
Okay, my motion is that we table this until the September 8 meeting. At which time, we will receive a report from the Code Enforcement Paper. And that if progress is being made, that will allow these items that we've talked about, the roof, siding, windows, doors, or all that to be completed by the 21st, then we can simply table this motion again until the 21st. But at that time, if things haven't really begun to happen and have happened, well, then I think that's, that's it. And, and we may be doing the gentleman a favor. Sounds like if the inside's already gutted and so forth, there's not much value sitting on that property right now.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's the longest motion we ever had today.
Joy, would you like to speak on this?
Yes.
You were signed up?
Yes.
Okay.
Joy Hampton. I'm with the Moore American. And I'm just a little bit confused because I'm looking at the county assessor records. And according to these records, and it is the right house, it's the right address, there's a photo. It's definitely that house. It says that this property was purchased by Fenwick Associates LLC in September 19, 2012, for $7,500. I, I can't find Mr., Mr. Heyman. And I'm just curious of when Mr. Heyman became the owner. And it, it just looks like that $7,500 would probably be the value of the land. So, if we could just get some clarification on who the owner actually is? Because the owner of record is Fenwick Associates.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Fenwick Associates. Fenwick Associates, I'll see, is my company. I, we own it. I own it.
So, you just bought the property 2012?
Yeah, I purchased it for $7,500, like she said. And we, it was totally fire damaged in the attic, and then-
Well, that's a whole different deal.
Yeah.
And I'm not prepared to do that at all. If you, if you bought it then, you haven't fixed it by now. I don't expect you're going to.
We put work into it. We put, we followed, we gutted it, got all the damaged furniture out. We put the trusses in, we put the decking on, we put the roof on, we put the drive, we've dried it in twice, actually. So, I, I was working on it May. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not deceiving you guys. I don't have none.
But didn't you just tell me a while ago you lived in that house?
No, sir.
You were going to?
Yes. It's going to be my, it's going to be my little one. It's going to be where I live.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for that vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
No. Item carries. Item number four is consider a condemnation and demolition appeal for 400 North Arnold, application by Nancy Coffey.
Mayor, Council. This is a home that was damaged by the March 2015 tornado. It was posted for condemnation on May 22nd. Administrative hearing was held on June the 8th. The owner was present at that meeting. She explained that she is having problems with insurance, but she was hoping to have that resolved soon. The administrative order that was issued gave the owner until July 1st to begin repairs. However, she is still working with her insurance company for payment. Because of the extenuating circumstances of working with the insurance, and because her property is well-maintained, staff does believe that granting additional time is appropriate in this situation. We would recommend granting Ms. Coffey 45 days to begin repairs, with six months to complete the repairs. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you own the property? Okay, good.
I'd like the motion to wait, except staff requisition.
A second. All right. Thank you. Thank you both.
Are you going to be able to meet those deadlines, you think, best you know at this point?
I, we are still having a problem with the insurance company. We finally did a walkthrough on July 29th with my adjuster. I have a public adjuster who's representing me. And he walked through with the insurance company's adjuster. And he agreed with the assessment of my engineer, everything that needed to be replaced. And I'm waiting for a quote from them, and I, and my adjuster told me, hopefully I'll have a quote within the next couple of weeks.
Just curious, who's your insurance company?
Casualty Corporation of America.
Okay. Have you, have you spoken to the Insurance Commissioner's office?
I have not.
You should try them. They have, they have a person just for problems like this. And they're very good at working them out, and they're-
Should I do that, since I actually have a public adjuster representing me?
I would call them and ask them, and they will help you.
Okay.
So, and if they don't, call me.
Okay. Again, I am maintaining the house. I've mowed, I've mowed the lawn every single week since the tornado happened. We've done everything we can to the outside of the home. I've been told by the public adjuster not to touch anything inside, since we still have a dispute. So, I've done everything I can to maintain as much as I can.
Okay. But they, they will help you on that.
Okay. I will do that. I'll check into that.
Like I said, if they don't, call me.
Okay.
And we'll go to lunch with the Insurance Commissioner.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a contract with IMSTAT, EMS, Norman Regional Hospital Authority, DBA, Norman Regional Health System, to provide ambulance services to the city.
Mayor, this is the formal contract with IMSTAT to begin provision of ambulance service in the community. The effective date of this will be October 1st. Or at least, that's the date we're all shooting for, and we think we're going to be able to make that. This is a five-year contract that we believe meets all of the issues and requirements that the city put out there, and that the, the questions that have been raised over time with regard to ambulance service, and that is two ambulance units in the city limits at all times. Patient discretion for transport, which is the state law, but also the contract requires them to take people to where they want to go. They also, IMSTAT will provide the dispatching as a part of this contract. They'll have quite a bit of training that'll be available to our fire department employees, and that's, and that's already been going on over time. But there would be no cost to support city-sponsored special events and city functions. And there's no direct cost to the city for this contract. So, Eddie Sims with IMSTAT is here, if you have any questions of him. But we certainly are recommending approval of this.
Eddie, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just a couple of quick questions, and I was just reading through this. It comes about IMSTAT will provide ambulances, equipment, and relevant stock.
That, that's the legal term for ambulance.
Okay. And then, if there's just a paragraph in here about IMSTAT maintaining equipment owned by the city of Moore, or new equipment that we might purchase?
I think that has to do, like, if there are AEDs provided or something like that, we'll take care, we will take care of the maintenance on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion's already approved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is receive a report of Select Actuarial Services and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2015.
Mayor and Council, Laura Sprout with Select Actuarial Services is here to present our annual actuarial report and to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me again. Each year, Select Actuarial Services performs an actuarial evaluation for the city for your self-insured workers' compensation plan, your automobile and general liability claims, and also for the self-funded health plan. And so, we provide a complete report that we send to risk management, that you may have received a copy of tonight. I've prepared a brief PowerPoint handout that I think you've received that will just go over the main results of this report. And of course, if you have any question, I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you have. So, just moving right to that and getting through that. As I said, we want to provide the city with an evaluation of the retained liabilities for health, workers' compensation, automobile and general liability. This keeps you in compliance with the GASB, those accounting requirements for recognizing your total liabilities. Two main objectives of the report are to provide an analysis of the required reserves. That's for the balance sheet for unpaid liabilities associated with claims that happened prior to June 30, 2015. Then the second objective is to provide you a forecast for the upcoming two fiscal years, the 15, 16 fiscal year and the 16, 17 fiscal year. So, we'll begin with the reserves. On page four is a summary, the total liability for all of these, for health, workers' compensation liability, and other liability, other tort claims, is $2,180,000. Of that, workers' compensation makes up the largest portion, because those claims tend to stay open longer. And, and so, the liabilities remain, remain around longer. So, the workers' compensation losses are estimated at $1,467,000. Health is the next largest, at $406,000 of unpaid claims. Your automobile and general liability is $267,000, and you have another tort claim with remaining liabilities of $40,000. So on page five, we compare this to last year, and you can see that last year at year end, your total liabilities were $2,187,000. So you've stayed pretty level as far as the amount of unpaid liabilities for fiscal year end. There were increases, there was an increase for the liability, but workers' compensation and health benefits were a little less. So there was just a little movement between the lines. But overall, your experience is about the same. So looking briefly at each piece, last year, when we were here, we presented a two-year forecast to you as well for fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen. So now we get to see how fourteen, fifteen played out compared to those expectations. And so for health, those costs came in very close to expected. I think we adjusted by $4,000, which is, which is small compared to the estimates for health. The thirteen, fourteen year, which is now completely closed, the total cost for that year for health benefits was $3,912, which was a little less than what we had expected in last, at last year's evaluation. Workers' compensation, everything is right in line with where we had projected. We decreased in total by about $12,000, again, not very large change in that piece. For the liability piece, you know, every once in a while you'll have a claim. So there, the increase in liability was due to a claim from 2014 that emerged. But there were other claims that came in less than expected. So overall, the, the health went up by $66,000. So that was the total change in the, in reserve estimates. And again, it netted the change, $2,180 versus $2,187 last year. So moving into the, the budget, the purpose of this estimate is to give you an amount for accruals for the fifteen, sixteen year to help pay for the claims that occur during this year, although they may take many years to pay out. So the total budget for fifteen, sixteen is $5,282,000. The majority of this is for the health plan. $4,575,000 is estimated for your retained portion of health benefits. That includes medical and prescription. And of course, you have a stop-loss limit of $100,000 per individual for the period. For workers' compensation, the forecast for claims for this year is $593,000 and liability $114,000. Just to put these in perspective to how experience has been tracking compared to prior years, the next few slides just give a comparison. Last year, when we, when we gave you that two-year forecast, fifteen, sixteen was the second year out, and we estimated $4,459,000, and now we've increased that to $4,575,000. Part of that is an increase in the number of participants in the plan, and part of it is a slight increase in our estimate of the monthly cost per employee. But again, you have increased from a $75,000 stop-loss to a $100,000 stop-loss. So you are taking on a little bit more risk. So then we've also got the projection for sixteen, seventeen, and we've used a three percent medical inflation to adjust the cost per employee and assumed about three additional employees. So that would be the, the cost change. For workers' compensation, the estimate of $593 is increased over our estimate from last year. We use a cost per payroll to, to do these projections. Your payroll estimate has come down, fifteen, sixteen, you, you know, you provided me with an estimate for payroll. So now that we have, we have a better estimate, which is actually a little lower, but the rate per thousand dollars of payroll is five percent higher in our estimation compared to last year. And moving forward to sixteen, seventeen, we'll have slight inflation in the cost trend and a little increase in payroll to get us to $634,000 for the sixteen, seventeen year. Again, for liability, we use a cost per thousand dollars of payroll. So again, payroll has gone down, or the estimate for the payroll for fifteen, sixteen is lower than last year's estimate, I should say. And, but our cost per payroll has increased also about five percent. So, but the dollar value, last year's forecast was $109,000, this year $114,000. So dollar, dollar-wise, not much change in the forecast for liability. And moving forward to sixteen, seventeen, the liability forecast is $121,000. So the final page just gives you all the numbers on one graphic so that you can have that all there handy. The total reserve, again, for the balance sheet for June thirty of fifteen is $2,180,000. And the budget for fifteen, sixteen, $5,282,000. And for sixteen, seventeen, we're estimating right now $5.5 million. Do you have any questions?
So we're doing okay?
Yes, there's a lot of stability this year in the estimates, and so I think you're doing a good job.
Good.
These numbers always help us project forward in terms of the actual budget that you all adopt. And even though you're seeing them now, we have a good idea whenever the budget's being developed as to what these projections, particularly the health care costs, because that's the biggest dollar amount that we're looking at as far as these things.
Are we still insured in all this?
Yes.
And do we have, is the stop-loss on all of these categories $100,000?
Just the medical is on, stop-loss on the medical.
The health benefits for medical. For workers' compensation, you retain $500,000?
$500,000.
$500,000 per claim, $600,000 for police and fire-related claims.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Those numbers we can...
On the, on the general liability, we don't actually carry excess. We just use the Oklahoma tort line fact, which has, in and of itself, we'll plan a large amount every year on liability and really weren't getting anything out of it.
And we can also, we, we adjust those stop-loss numbers or look at those numbers every year. But the lower you push those, the more premiums are. So there's a balance between what we, what we have as far as stop-loss.
Randy, do we need to vote to accept this?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Make a motion to accept the report?
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the report, would you call for the vote? There's no other discussion, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the state's share of the Thirty-Fourth Street Bridge, I-35 Bridge Project. And I believe it's $4 million, right?
It is, Mayor. This is the formalization of the agreement that I guess was essentially a handshake with the mayor.
It's a good handshake.
Probably two, three, two, three years ago. That was a breakfast, I believe, one morning that...
I paid for it.
We had breakfast with...
That was a good return.
Then Director Ridley, and then when, when they changed, the current director of ODOT is honoring that. But this is the form contract that ODOT gives us, but this is $4 million in federal funds. It'll be added to our $15 million of local funds on that, on the bridge project, which as we get a little further into it, we're finding we definitely will, will need, so...
Yes. Yeah, it was, you know, the Department of Transportation has always been good to us. Ever since I've been mayor here, they, they've always been really good, and I appreciate the job that they do. I know they get a lot of criticism across the state, but I will not be one of those criticizing them for the job that they've done with the department that they have and the money, limited budgets that they have. They do an excellent job.
I'm just curious what we indicated that we will need it, obviously we need it, but I don't ran it as unexpected.
Not necessarily unexpected. I think the right-of-way acquisition particularly is gonna be a little bit trickier and probably more expensive than what we thought it might be.
And they tell us we're gonna get off-ramp now. So that's, we're not, we're not positive because we haven't seen it in writing yet, and it's not on this contract. But they have told us.
There's no guarantees of that at any point, but...
But they have told me that. That's what it's supposed to be used for.
The right-of-way cost, since there's gonna be federal dollars in it, we have to comply with all of the federal requirements, term for whatever it is out there, but it's the appraisal, the relocation cost, anything like that, if you're relocating or acquiring a business. And so there's two tracks, at least two tracks out there that will...
That's what we ran it through on the trailer park.
And the environmental impact studies.
Yeah, anytime you have federal dollars involved with it, the requirements do go up. So I think this money will help us defray some of that. But nothing unexpected per se, just more money.
Yeah, and it would just be, Stephen Stan ran on that deal too.
Well, good.
It's, it was a good team meeting.
Make a motion, and we approve this agreement.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? No, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is discuss and consider a possible agreement with Tad Bliss to participate in a roadway drainage project to extend Pol Road from Northeast Twelfth Street to Northeast Twentieth Street. And I ask that this be put on here, and for a couple of reasons. One, we've had major drainage problems over on Janeway for years, and this will help alleviate that. We'll be putting, well, if we pass it, we'll be putting drainage project from about the middle of the property on down to the creek instead of running it out the housing addition. The other thing that this will give us is access from Twelfth Street to Twenty-seventh Street, where Twenty-seventh Street has an underpass for the railroad for an emergency if you needed to go from Twelfth Street and get around while a train is parked there. So anyway, that's why this is on here. I didn't want to make a precedent where we do this, because normally we don't do this for developers on non-retail projects, but I requested it beyond the agenda so we could discuss it.
And the cost?
We only have a preliminary cost at this point of the roadway improvements, around $400,000. There's not been any engineering design, detailed engineering design on the roadway. That's a good estimate, we think, on the roadway and the storm sewer and the roadway. The mayor inadvertently said Janeway, but it's Nail Parkway.
Oh, Nail Parkway, I'm sorry.
And this, this property is the continuation of that industrial development over there on the west side of the, of the railroad tracks, Pol Road extending Pol Road on down from where it currently dead ends on down to Twelfth Street. Mr. Bliss owns that property and has been visiting with us for some time now about, about these issues and what the city may can do.
Ted, do you want to come up and tell us what you've got going on there?
I'm sorry to repeat that.
Would you like to come up and, and tell us what you're gonna build on? I know what you've got going is pretty exciting, so...
I'm Ted Bliss. Right now, we've already got three lots that are sold to an individual that's already started construction on one of them. We've got several other lots that are spoken for, I think, in the essence of helping the city and us bringing revenue in, solving some of the drainage issues that drain on a Nail Parkway right now. It looks good.
Okay.
All of these are industrial buildings or...
Yes, sir.
Development, so...
So that road, if this were to happen, would run right behind those tall, right, your front, yeah, right?
Yeah.
I know on the existing Pol Road, Twenty-seventh, Forty, Seventy, Twenty, that it kind of curves. There's a field in between the backyards and the Twenty-seventh, or Pol Road. But this would be, the road would be in their backyard.
There's not much of a curve on it.
It should relatively be the same all the way through from where it's existing, all the way to Twelfth Street back there. All the Pol Road now does back up everything, everybody's...
And that was platted a long time ago, that road, we just never built it.
Wouldn't you say we, we have never built it?
We, we accepted the plat.
Okay.
The property was platted years ago. I don't know what all the circumstances were on it, but generally what happens today is that we don't let them file a plat for lots without the development there or plans to be putting it in, or a letter of credit that it'll be put in. The situation was caused all those years ago whenever the city accepted the plat. And then whoever had the property at the time didn't put the development in. Ted bought the land sometime later, and it's, it's platted property, but not developed property, which is a pretty unusual situation that we've got. We don't have that anywhere else around that I know of.
Just, just my thoughts, I would want to get a little more input from the homeowners, the ones there, and just see if they have any objections or what, you know?
I'm okay with that. Well, I'd put it on the agenda so we can talk about it.
Yeah. I know that the field, you know, something will go there, and it sounds like some things are going there, and I don't know if, I don't know if a developer, you know, go over by the train tracks or something, you know, that's...
Well, it'd be better...
It'd probably be better, like we've got it platted, to put the buildings against the railroad tracks so they're not adjacent to the residential properties. Plus, it also will give roadway to those residents that use that field now all the time to get to their backyards. I can't see that residents would not be in favor, especially those that their houses are getting flooded continually because of the improper drainage.
I think Ted's correct there. We definitely would rather have the roadway, I think, there than, than the backs of what's gonna be in the back of some of those properties up there backing up against the fences. I mean, I, I would agree with that.
And a lot of them do use that dirt road there to go into the backyards.
On up to the north, they don't have access, but there is a major drainage way through there. And part of the way, it's a different ownership up on, up towards Twenty-seventh, up there. Those back, the backyards along this area, I believe, would have some access to it.
Do we have more?
Yeah, that's the big question.
What I would...
It seems like Max and Al all have credit cards.
Our credit card currently doesn't have that limit on it, no. The discussion we've had, I think, of late with Mr. Bliss is that the city, if the city chooses to participate, then it would be some amount, but not the whole amount.
So it's a partnership or something?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you think that there's public benefit here in terms of, and there is certainly, to, to repair the drainage and to provide that access or way around Twelfth Street where the train blocks it off to get to Twenty-seventh Street in the underpass. What I'd prefer that you do is just say, we'll agree to put X in an amount, whether it's $200, $200,000, whatever it is. And then everything else would be, would be on them. That, that's a way, that'd be a better way. Or we can go and have the thing fully engineered and come back and say, here's the total estimated cost according to plans, and then look at it from that perspective.
The idea that we would have it totally engineered and so forth, as particularly when it comes to the drainage and that sort of thing, has some appeal to me, but...
To get a real dollar amount?
Yeah.
We currently have some existing engineering on the drains. Would they go and improve the subdivision?
Not on, not on Pol Road, but on the drains through the subdivision.
Yeah.
That's not part of what Tad's talking about, or that's not part of this project per se, because there's still some work inside the subdivision there on Nail Parkway and on Meadow Brook over to the creek that needs to be done. That is, that's on the city. But what we can do in discussions with Tad and in partnership with him is design some storm sewer on his property and perhaps some detention on that property, which he'll have to provide for the development, that'll help with the storm drainage downstream. And it may be that some of the water can be diverted, not the right part, but send another direction on what it's going currently.
I hate to say it here, just throw out an arbitrary amount, so could we kind of take this direction that we all raised? You and your staff can go ahead and negotiate this agreement with Mr. Bliss and bring it back, or are you looking for a dollar a minute?
We can do that. I mean, A, we needed for you all to tell us to or not to proceed forward with this. If you say that go and do that, we'll do that and bring back something that we think is reasonable.
And this is what is due to all parties, really, when?
Well, I think so, yeah. There's some, there's a couple of buildings under construction over there now that are going to need roadway.
Yeah.
Built that may very well need that before we get to this. I don't know, Tad, will that happen?
I've got a gentleman here with me. What's your prediction on the completion of your building?
About seven weeks, I'm sure it'll be ready.
We're not going to be, we can't move that fast.
So the, the property is platted, so things can be built there that are within the proper.
If he were to bring a set of plans in for the roadway today, he could be under construction on that tomorrow if he was just out there.
Doing it himself. But if, if he's wanting the city to possibly partner in help with the roadway costs some amount, and we had some say-so, this is what it's going to be.
You certainly can.
Well, and I would just, again, I would just, not opposed to it, but I want, you know, I would love to be able to put this out there and get some input from the people that would be impacted by a road behind their house, and then maybe some kind of, I don't know, trees or things along there to help with the, I'm just trying to think of my yard back up for that. You know, my backyard barbecue, and just now it's.
Well, here's the deal, the building's going to be there anyway, so.
Well, he wants to build it all and go for it, but if he's wanting the help from the city, we have not an opportunity here, I believe, to, to help make it great for everyone.
And people are apparently using it as a passage way already without any formal street being there.
Right, that's correct. They'll come from the north and from the south off 12th Street, have the curve to get back to their houses, and of course, you know, the development would meet the guidelines of the easiness between the properties and the beautification behind their houses, which in ultimate will increase their property value, other than a hay field with water flowing behind it.
Look, I mean, y'all are my boss.
I'd make a motion that we offer our staff to negotiate this project with Mr. Bliss, and then go back with a recommendation on the amount of quarters and, and the scope of the project.
Okay. And at the same time, maybe we could have somebody do a survey of those 20 houses down through there and see how they feel about it.
Mark and I can go visit them.
Yeah, we could do that. I'll go. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. You okay? Yeah. You may want, okay, you made a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Have a second, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item nine, discuss and consider approval of expenditure of $33,000 to resurface Indian Hills Road between Bryant Avenue and Eastern Avenue and Sunny Road, excuse me, Sunny Lane Road from 34th Street to the city limit line.
Mayor and council, Terry Stacy is requesting this partnership. Both of those roadways are arterial streets. We don't own all of either one of those roadways. The expenditure on Indian Hill Road will be the north half of that roadway, that's in the limit to our city limits between Eastern and Bryant. And then on Sunny Lane, it'll be from our 34th Street to the city limit line, which is approximately a half a mile south. So, but the, the total expenditure for the two combined is $33,000. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
So he's providing the labor and the machinery?
Yes.
And we're just providing asphalt, basically?
On, on Sunny Lane, it'll be a bill and overlay, and then on Indian Hill Road, there'll be some deep patches plus the overlay.
So he's, he's basically covering the costs except for the supplies?
That's correct.
He's a good guy to us.
That's money well spent.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Maybe he'd want to do, participate in a Pol Road project. He can do that for 33,000. Sounds like a better deal. Okay. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August 3, 2015. Item B, ratify action of the city council on acceptance of an annual actuarial report from select actuarial services for fiscal year ended June 30 of 2015. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016 in the amount of $1,155,143.92.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
So.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 11 is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August 3, 2015. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016 in the amount of $94,160.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. And that is, Terry's not here? Is that you, David?
I'm the vice chair, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus? Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
David Roberts?
Yes, here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Gadner?
Item 13 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held July the 20th, 2015.
So moved?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 14 is new business citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B is items from the city council or trustees.
One, we spoke briefly about the contract with the resource officers and the schools getting ready to start back up, and I think last year we, chief of bellings, we had provided, or the elementary schools provided a workspace for officers to go in and work on reports throughout their shift, or are we continuing that?
I guess, yes, continuing that also. Sorry, I was young. Yeah, they're going to continue the workstations. Also, they are hiring an off-duty officer to do some roving of the elementary schools a few days a week. There will be officers frequenting the elementary schools also, one that's assigned to it, and that's something we've worked out as a kicker job for the Moore School, and then of course we'll have the guys go and mind their reports and things.
And then the, I'm sure there is where it's going to go with the officers in high schools and junior highers?
There is, yeah.
And they're doing it a while.
Yeah, we've been doing it for quite a few years now.
But.
Anybody else? I have one thing. Steve and I talked about this the other day. We have a project that we probably need to talk to Elizabeth and Gerald about. We, we're talking about, we have a problem. You guys know it up there, it's Continental Hotel or Motel, whatever it was, or Apartments, and the, what's the other one?
Nottingham.
Two officers, two, yeah, Nottingham. To maybe put that into a HUD project and buy that project and basically tear it down to the ground and build brand-new handicapped housing on it for veterans, and it'll be one of the first of its kind in the country if we can do that, so that's one of the things I would like for us to kind of maybe look at, get behind and support it, because I think this is a really good project that could happen up there, clean up the area. It would still be low income because these people don't have jobs. Talk to the VOTEC, they can work on training to get these people jobs after they get training, so this could be a really good thing for our community. So I'd like to see some, maybe in works on that project.
Where, where at?
Nottingham Apartments, yeah, Nottingham Square, then right next to its Continental.
Up there on Nottingham Boulevard, so it's a, it's a complex.
All that. Yeah, there's a couple of empty lots in between there, too. Maybe we can incorporate that into a really nice housing project, you know, for veterans.
We could have some kind of a deal, the city council meeting, or somebody was going to do something in there off of Janeway, because we, Janeway and those apartments.
Discount to movers.
Discount movers, yeah, that's a moving company.
Over there on.
It's closer to Shields, yeah. But anyway, that's something we could look at, maybe get approval on it. It's also something that the VA would be willing to assist on payments, so we would get monies to maintain those properties. So it's a kind of a win-win for everybody, hopefully.
Would that be some of our HUD money?
Yes, HUD monies will pay for it. It's owned by, it's owned by individuals who have HUD balances right now that are in the rears, apparently. So HUD would let us take over the property.
Something we'll definitely look into and see.
What are options?
Okay. Item C is items from the trust manager or trustee.
Do I have anything to say, Mayor?
No? Wow. Okay. Item 15 is a gentleman.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. We are gone. Close for the, oh, yes.